Sorry, I'm late. I was on campus. There's a bunch of crap going on so. That was my bad.
Well, no, it's okay.
Okay, so chapter. Seven. Actually, let me go ahead and open. Do you see like when I do this? Do you see my screen or do you only see the whiteboard? I just don't have any idea.
I can just see the whiteboard.
Oh, okay. Okay, well whatever chapter seven, this is dealing with viruses. Um, so I am going to take some time to kind of just review what we have going on on a study sheet first. Um, and then we will, I have a whole like a little PowerPoint. Um, I don't know if you've looked at chapter five, I'm made of the UK. We have the same kind of stuff available for that. So we'll run through viruses um, just really quick in a nutshell. Alright, so starting off, we know that viruses, first thing about viruses is that they have to live inside of other cells. And this is because uh, they use the machinery. Of those host cells. Actually um, build their own pockets. Which is equivalent to like their their progeny, right? So um, the other thing about viruses, they are a cellular. They don't have a true cellular structure. And this could even be uh, further broken down to just say like, they don't have um. You know, they don't always have a lipid bilayer. They sometimes have an envelope, but that's not like the true lip bilayer of what we have for cells. They do don't have a nucleus. Um, their genome isn't always DNA. Sometimes it's RNA and sometimes it could be single-stranded DNA or single-stranded RNA. So it's doing that. Um. But yeah. Okay, uh, the only things there are uh, that really has to have. What are you doing? So they always must have some kind of genome. And of course, this could be DNA or RNA. It could be single-stranded or double-stranded, right? It could be positive sense or negative sense. Referring to whether or not you can read them and actually make uh, like a transcript directly from it. Or you have to turn it to its complement in order to do that. And that's what that is referring to. Um, and so we have, and it could have like segments or it could be just one. But just and sort of unpredictable that way. So we have to have some kind of genome and then um, it's all encased within the capsid. And that capsid is a protein um, made up of repeating subunits called capsiners. And so that capsid. And then those capsiners, those subunits. So those capsulars, those subunits that we're talking about there, they should auto assemble. Most of the time they're gonna auto assemble. So they just have like infinity divide with one another. So they have a natural. Auto assembly. Alright, so that's the idea of the actual structure, the basic structure of what's required. But that of course it doesn't end here, would it? So viruses, that's not it, right? They're not just gonna be genome and capsid. Viruses can also have. The following. So this could um, it could include the envelope, which is the. Lipid, uh, such as lipid bilayer. Cover stolen from the host whenever the viruses are budding out. Um, so they can have that. Um, they are also, I should say, when they, we talk about the must have. The capsid um, in that protein covering, this includes the spikes. The spikes are used as like keys to enter into the target cells. Okay, so you can have this, they can have that. They can also package in um. Prepackaged proteins that manufactured from the previous cell to carry with it to help it in the next cell. So any prepackaged proteins, this could include a wide variety of things for the virus. Um. Yeah, I'm happy with that. Okay, um. Let's go through the life cycle. Life cycle or infection cycle, however long it did. They're technically not alive, right? Because they're not truly cells. So let's not forget about that. Um, right, so let's see. There's uh, several steps involved in this. There is. Add absorption. Um, cause this listed out, let me just go ahead and list it out and we'll come back and we will talk about what they are. So let me get this out on here. My slide, I'll just keep looking over at this slide. Penetration may speak for themselves, but just in case, encoding. Synthesis. Assembly. Okay, so adsorption is basically attachment onto that host or target. Um, and then remember, this is usually going to be governed by the spike interaction with surface proteins. On the um, surface of the host cell. So it can be very specific to very, you know, specific molecules. Um, and in some cases, if it's not completely like specific, at least. In that way, um, the approach, one protein that it might involve with what I'm trying to say is it could be present on a lot of different kinds of cells. But it could be um, still a very specific dimension, that one kind of protein that just happens to be present on a lot of different kinds of cells. Um, like for example, with COVID, we have the ACE two molecule on the surface of the cells. And that ACE two molecule is found on a lot of different cells. So that's how it gets in though. That's the lock that it interacts with. For penetration, um, this is usually due to endocytosis. Which just is referring to the host cell taking in. That um, infecting virus particle. Is known as a virion. Any single virus particle that is capable of being infectious and doing all that. Um, that's, that's a virion. Man, you don't got that. Raccoon broken on house again last or this morning or something. I don't know when. And we had possums last night. So we have like a wildlife specialist coming here today to come pick up the babies. That the possum left in our yard. Possum love two babies. They're really cute, but uh, yeah, I don't need possum babies. So it's been a lot. It's not been very long and it's been a lot. So it's been a weird day already. Alright, um, so yeah, so endocytosis, it's like if the, if the virus comes and interacts with the lock. And um, and and fits in with that. So um, virus comes in coated with all these little keys. Key comes in, it fits in the little lock. And when that happens, that cell responds by eating it in basically. So it's not true phagocytosis. We're not going around trying to eat things, but that interaction signals the cell to kind of swallow it up. So that's what we're talking about there, that endocytosis, endo into cyto the cell. Okay, so that's penetration. Um, and then we have encoding, so um, we're gonna go. Uh, the protective. The envelope, lipid bilayer, that membrane as well as the capsid. To release um, the genome into the cell. And that's kind of like the start of the whole process. So synthesis is talking about making copies of the genome. To be packaged into the new. Bio particles. This is the reproductive process, right? For them, just making copies of themselves. Um, and it also includes. Let me do this. So also it includes um, making like. The capsid proteins. And spike proteins. And also lining the outside of. The host cell. Membrane. With spikes. And that's in the case. Of those viruses that are actually. Um, envelope. Okay. Then um, assembly. Is um. The all of the above. Synthesis products. Together to need working. Virions that you're gonna release out um, during the process. And then the release, this could be by um. Budding. Through. The host. Membrane. And covering the viruses. With host membrane studded with. Spike proteins. Or it could be licensing out. Especially if the case definitely always in the case of phages. I don't know what else I can say about that. I'm pretty happy with that. So. Oh, uh, there's one other thing. So there could be budding. Let me actually separate this out while I'm thinking about this. I feel like I'm missing something. I was. And then the other one is um, exo cyphosis. Which is literally the opposite of endocytosis, right? So you're taking um. Vesicles fill. With the new viruses. And like merging it with that membrane, the outside membrane of the cell itself. So it's like a balloon filled with viruses coming up towards the outer membrane of the cell. And it merges with that outer membrane and just like shoves the whole contents out. It's fine. So I'll go with the so on more on to the next thing. I will say that you can, you can already imagine it since we've already learned this, you already know, but um. That this stuff. Can cause damage to the cell. In the form of cytopathic effects, anything that is abnormal as far as. Um, you know, it shouldn't be looking that way. It shouldn't be acting that way. It shouldn't be behaving that way. And it is doing that specifically because. Of the infection that you're observing and that is a cytopathic effect on that cell. And that can include things like um, inability to adhere. Using adherence. Rounding. Censitia. Which is the same, that's what censitia are is whenever cells merge together. Um, what else can we say? Abnormal division. Et cetera, anything pretty much. Multiple nuclei. It doesn't matter. I'm not really gonna ask you about the specifics, right? But if I were to tell you about this is. You had a viral infection, this is how the cells are behaving, then those um, abnormal sort of behaviors. If you weren't expecting that can be harmful to the life cycle of the cells themselves, those are what's the cytopathic effect. Alright, let's get a new page going. Let's talk about bacteriophages. We'll say this, okay, actually let me. Back it up a little bit. Bacteriophages are viruses that infect bacteria. And we can also spot these. Phages. Okay, um, so. In general. A species of bacteriophage. Only infects one species of bacteria. Uh, I will add on to this though, uh, just so that we're clear and we're on the same page. A like, let's say T four bacteriophage, it infects E. coli. So it's only gonna affect E. coli. It doesn't infect, you know, Salmonella. It doesn't infect Shagella or anything else. Only E. coli. However, E. coli can be infected by a lot of different phages. So I do want to be clear about that. So. The species of bacteria page only infects one species of bacteria and only that species of bacteria. But. Bacterial species. Can be infected. By a variety of patients. Not always, cause there are some that only, that only have one, but you know. Pretensive is there. Okay, fine, that's good. So what else want to say about these? Um, bacteriophages, well, it's like we said in the previous page, bacteriophages always lies. The infected host bacterial cell. Now, of course, this is drawing the lytic phase and we'll get into what that means. Um, but there are different kinds of phages. There are just traditional. Phages that go um. That only go through the lytic. Life cycle. Um, and then there are the ones that can cycle between. This isn't a formal term, traditional. It's just one that I'm using to help separate in our minds the differences. Okay, and so the other one. This is going to be um, temperate. So temperate can cycle between. The lysogenic. And the lytic. So this is, these are, these are some of the terms I feel like people often forget about or or miss on some of these exams or get confused between. Lysogenic and lytic. So we're gonna go through these and break it down and hopefully um, get this, you know, parsed out in a way that makes a little bit of sense here. So in our uh, temperate beige. There's two phases that it'll go through, lysogeny and lytic. Lysogeny is when the temperate. Phase incorporates. Its genome. Within the host bacterial. Genome. Okay, so when this happens, lysogeny, when lysogeny is occurring. The genes. Of the phage. Um, can impart new traits. To the host bacteria. During this scenario. Okay, and so of course, when this happens, this has its own term. And that term is called lysogenic conversion. And this can include things like um, drug resistance. Or toxin production. I mean, all sorts of stuff that can help. Okay. Um, so that's like gonna be lysogenic person. So lysogeny, that temperate phase is going to incorporate its genome into the host bacterial. Um, genome. So they become one, if you will, and it's just gonna kind of wait it out. It's sort of like waiting out for better, nicer conditions, but um, you know, it could become a permanent. Um, interaction between the phage and the bacterium. Either way, um, it can be beneficial to the bacterium or it can even be harmful if there are genes involved that inhibit. The health of the bacterial cell, but we usually just talk about how it can help it. Um, but yeah, so that's how that's gonna work and. Um, the incorporated. Genome. The incorporated phage genome. Has its own term whenever this is happening and that term is called a prophage. The prophage is that incorporated phage genome. Alright, um, let me see, sing a thing before I move on to the lytic phase. Alright, so then the lytic part. This, of course, is going to be what we consider the, the regular, the traditional, the normal. Um, where the virus, the phage. Is multiplying and making copies of itself. Um, until it verse that host cell. And then um, the released. Uh, new phagers. Go infect the nearby. Victims, right? So that's the lytic cycle. That's just the regular way to be really, honestly. Um, okay, so that is bacteriophages and um, how they're gonna incorporate themselves. And we've talked about a little bit about the structure of the T four phage, which looks like a crazy, ridiculous like rocket ship, right? And I'm not gonna necessarily post any picture of that one. You can see that. But yeah, so that's the idea of um. Basically, what's going on with the the bacteriophages anyways? Why is this here? Talking about viruses, my freaking computer popping up was like, you need to update your. You type, I know I do. Don't keep popping up with it. It's like a non-stop thing. You type, I know I do, don't keep popping up with it, it's like a non-stop thing. But anyways, here is a picture of the. Difference between the lytic cycle and the lysogenic cycle, and it has to be this big, but. Alright, so there's that image, um, to refer to whenever we're looking at the difference between the lysogenic and the lytic cycle. So that we can build, um, visual representation of that, so, uh, going back. To. Uh, regular, I said like regular viruses, but the non-bacterial viruses, I'm gonna go ahead and, um. Add another page here. Um, it's going back to also human viruses, but eukaryotic. Viruses, so not. Bacteria phages, um, so they also can incorporate their, uh, genome in, so they. The viral genome. Into their host cells, um. Um, so when that happens, it is not called a prophase, right? So. When a virus that infects. A eukaryote. Like ours. So when a virus is able to infect a eukaryotic cell, like our own cells, um, they. And they also incorporate their genome in. When that happens, um, the. I'm gonna worry this, so I'm trying to think of the wording for this. Whatever, we'll say that. The viral genome that has been incorporated. Is called a pro-virus, so this is very similar to what we were just talking about with the prophase. Right, but it gets called a pro-virus because now we're talking about a eukaryotic. Situation. So that's the idea there, just the same exact thing as what we're talking about with the prophages and the temperate phages and all that, but these are not. Phages, because they infect eukaryotic cells, so they're gonna be going through all sorts of different other steps that are involved in infecting a eukaryotic cell. But, um, they can do that same stuff, but when it happens now, they're called a pro-virus, not a prophase. Okay, that's from what my point is. Alright, um. So then, we know how in the bacteriophages and what we're previously talking about. When we are hiding out in those genomes, and we've got our, our prophase. Hiding out in the bacterial genome, incorporating itself in there, it's lysogenic, it's lysogenic conversion even, it's. It's got new genes in there that are helping out the bacterial cell, do new toxic things and all this sorts of stuff. Um, that, that basically, that is a process where we are kind of hiding out or waiting out or hanging out there. But it isn't meant to be truly permanent, even in some cases, though, it seems as though it has become permanent. It wasn't one that was really designed to be a permanent process. Um, so in the case of a pro-virus. Um, it becomes latent during this term. Okay, so that virus. Will be hanging out as a pro-virus, it is now latent, and it's kind of waiting, it's hiding out and stuff like that. That doesn't mean it won't, no one won't have an effect on the host, it can have an effect on the host. Especially if you have, uh, abnormal placement of the genes. Oh my god, would people, would you freaking just tell me before you, oh, this person is driving all the way from Hinton to come pick up these possums. And then just now are telling me, oh, we're almost in El Reno, which isn't that far from Methany, so I just wish you'd have told me, like. I'm here, but still, like, could you have told me, so you are coming here to my house, stranger? But yeah, so it is, it's just a virus, it's ha- it's hiding, it is waiting, um, you know, working, if you will. Waiting for better situation to come, um, but. Uh, but when that pro-virus is incorporated. Into that host DNA. Um, it can disrupt. Genes as well as. The cell cycle itself, so this can include what we've learned about mitosis in the last chapter. Alright, so remember with mitosis, PMAT, with prophase, metaphase, interphase, and telophase, that's just how your cells are going to duplicate themselves. Um, you know, it's part of your tissue, your body tissue or whatever. So that cycle can get disrupted, the checkpoints to make sure that everything is going correctly can get disrupted, all sorts of stuff can be bothered. Whenever you have a random DNA inserted into your own DNA disrupting, um, what's supposed to be going on normally. Um, so that is. That can lead to cancer. Okay, and when that happens. We'll have an oncovirus on our hand, and oncovirus is any virus. That can cause cancer as part of its, you know, normal infection cycle. Is capable of doing that, so when that pro-virus gets incorporated into the DNA, disrupts the genes as well as potentially the cell cycle itself. That can lead to cancer. Yes. So the example that we have in the study sheet, of course, is HPV or human papillomavirus that causes seraphoplasma. But there are other ones that can be associated with this, um. Uh, especially if we're talking about whenever your immune system is working to keep cancer cells in check. Cause your immune system actually does that, that's part of what your CD eight T cells can do is recognize cancer cells as foreign cells. And then go and kill them, but when your CD four, um, cells aren't there to activate that process, as is the case with HIV. Um, then you can have, you know, reemergence of strange cancers, so things like Burkitt's lymphoma and Caposse sarcoma, both of these are associated with that. A Burkitt's lymphoma is specific, I'm bringing it up specifically because it's caused by, um. Infection with Epstein-Barr virus, which is mono, and leads to cancer in HIV patients, so. So that's that, um, and then the last part that we had during this chapter. Was the prions. So we'll just briefly talk about this. So the prions, this is going to be, um. Misfolded proteins. Um, because they're misfolded, their hydrogen bonding, their hydrophobicity, their, um, hydrophilic aspects. Any of that stuff is all now, um, not, not where it should be within the shape of the protein, right? So those misfolded proteins, because of that, now aren't interacting with their environment appropriately, so they tend to stick together. So that'll make plaques. Or holes in the brain. And then, um, these holes. Form. A very characteristic pattern. Um, so it's very just characteristic damage to the brain, um. Which is why we call it spongy form encephalopathy. So this is spongy form, so looking sponge-like, encephalopathy just means a brain disease. So, um, this is technically considered to be. A subacute. Encephalitis. Um, so it is an encephalitis, so we are gonna have inflammation associated with the brain as well during these holes as they form throughout the brain. Um, from aggregations of these proteins, um, it's subacute because it takes, it has. Symptoms are very mild and very, very, um. Hard, this is poorly pronounced, that's not really what I mean, but they're not pronounced in the beginning, um, or you may have absolutely no. Symptoms whatsoever for decades, and then suddenly, um, as these proteins aggregate and the brains start having symptoms. It can go quite suddenly how it progresses, so, um, that's how that, that will become to be. So those are spongy form encephalopathies, um, they are misfolded proteins that aggregate together. And create plaques and holes in the brain, I actually wanna add on just a little bit about these misfolded proteins. On these misfolded proteins, um. Um, caused correctly folded. Proteins to misfold. Whenever they come into contact with one another. So that aspect of whenever they cause the healthy ones to misfold, whenever they come into contact with the healthy ones. That's the infectious part of it, so it's not like they are creating new genomes, cause all they are is literally like a protein. So when that misfolded protein comes into contact with a good protein, they both like misfolded good protein. It causes it to misfold and, um, it becomes a cascade reaction. Infectious proteinaceous particles is just saying that prions. Are proteins, proteinaceous is just saying they are protein particles. Infectious because it can be transferred from healthy proteins, um, from the misfolded proteins. So, yeah, it's very poorly understood as well, it's not, um. Entirely clear how they come to be and why they continue to be the way that they are, so anyways. That is, um, that's what I got for the whiteboard aspect of this, so I'm gonna go ahead and switch now over to my PowerPoint. Just really quick, I want to go through the whole thing, I'll probably go through maybe like. Um, one of the case studies, we'll go through all of my open ended questions and then one of the case studies, but I've got five case studies. So I don't know that I really wanna go through all of them, but at least have them posted for you guys to review for later. Okay, so I'm gonna close this, I hope you guys are good, I'm gonna, I'll post it later, of course, if you guys are on here now, you'll have full access to it. Um, and everybody else who is watching this later, um, will have to access it with, uh, their okay state. Alright, so this was just the study sheet, um, stuff that I'll, you guys can refer back to again. Everything in the comprehensive final is gonna be from the study sheets also, I'm not gonna be adding any new information or anything outside of that, so. That's, I think, a good thing, right? Um, so let's go through some simple kind of questions about the content we just went over. What is meant by filterable virus, um, viruses, some of them are really, 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 really tiny. Um, but even so, a water molecule is always gonna be smaller than a virus, so if you can filter out. Um, make a small enough pore in your filter to capture viruses, but let water pass through, you can always filter out. The virus, and that's what is meant by filterable virus. When they were first discovering about viruses and that they existed, they discovered them through filtering them out. Even though there was no bacteria, there was no, um, you know, growth or cloudiness in any broth or anything like that. You can still capture them in a filter, and if you know how to expose them to whatever thing they actually like to grow in. You can potentially culture them as well, but it doesn't work the same at all as it does with bacteria, but. But yeah, that's filterable virus, uh, what does obligate intracellular parasite mean? Obligate means you're obligated to do the thing, you have to do it, um, it's your obligation. So you have to be intra inside of the cell, and because you are using the cell's machinery and nutrients. And components and everything like that, you're causing harm to the cell, stealing from it. Um, so you're an obligate intracellular parasite, so parasite referring to the fact that you're damaging the host. What are the basic parts of a virus, um, the absolute required requirements of the virus being the capsid and it's, and the genome contained within. The capsid would include the spikes, if you have an envelope, which is a lipid coating, which you often steal from budding through the host's cells membrane. Um. Then you will have your spikes on the outside of that envelope, um, but if you don't have an envelope, it's just right on the outside of. Um but if you don't have an envelope, it's just right on the outside of the rest of your capsule, so. Spikes are what's gonna help you get into your target cells. Um so that was number five. What does the viral genome look like? That can be DNA, it can be RNA, it can be single-stranded, it can be double-stranded, it can be positive sense, it can be negative sense. Positive sense means you can get a product from that message, from the read, reading it directly. Negative sense means you have to make a copy into the positive sense before you can read it and make a product. So that's the difference there. Um so yeah, it can be anything. It can be in segments or it can be big, single piece. What are the major steps of infection by a virus? We had gone through adsorption. Um as well as uh getting into, into the cell. I just can't remember the terms for it anymore. Just just me going back, penetration was the p, the thing would. Uncoding, um that's gonna happen whenever removal of the actual capsid covering as well as the envelope. Um once we have uncovered everything through that uncoating process, then we're going to go through synthesis. The synthesis process is just making copies of your genome as well as the parts that are going to build the virus eventually. Um the assembly of the virus is the next part. We're bringing all those parts that we've made together and then um release. Um like usually by budding or um exocytosis. Those are the most common ways to get out of the cell in a eukaryotic infection. Um but in bacterial infections with bacteriophages. They're just gonna have lice. They're gonna build up as many as they can till they burst out of the cell, so that's lysis. Um. Cytopathic effects, um we kind of already went over this. It's not super important that you guys even know the examples as long as. If I were telling you that cells were no longer attaching to the surfaces they're supposed to be attaching to. Or that um, you know, they have multiple nuclei or they're all joined together in the big mass cell. That those would be examples of cytopathic effects, and it's caused by um the effects of usually the viral infection. Um whether it's because using stuff with the cell, causing damage in the cell. Or it can actually be because if you have s- uh cell A. Uh you know, on one side and then cell B on the other side. And those two cells are having viral spikes that are used to binding with stuff on the cells' surface anyway. Um neither of these cells are right next to each other, or this cell's infected. And it's got, you know, COVID spikes all over the outside of it while those COVID molecules are budding out and stealing and everything like that. Those molecules on the outside could just bind to the cell next to it and cause them to fuse together. That's sincetia. So that creates big um cells with multiple nuclei inside as they all merge together. But that is, you know, a pretty serious thing that can happen. Um and it can lead to, if you imagine that's happening in your vasculature. You've got, you know, um the capillaries and stuff like that. We've got these cells merging together. And that can lead to damage of the vasculature, weakening of the vasculature, and then eventually even bleeding for hemorrhage. And that's how things like Ebola um and stuff like that operate. In Ebola, you see quite a lot of sincetia formation as well as detachment. From whatever surfaces it was detached, the cells just won't attach to anything. I mean, obviously, you're gonna bleed out in that sort of a situation. If that's happening in your vasculature, in your endothelium, upper vasculature, so. Um but yeah, that can drive whole symptoms of infections as well. It's quite impressive. Um anyways, viral latency and the role the bo, the pro-virus plays. Pro-virus, that's just the viral genome inserted into your genome. Um viral latency is what, what you get whenever a virus is hiding out either um within your DNA itself or within a cell. Um somewhere separate away from, sorry, away from the um immune system. So. Yeah, so that's viral latency, however, that it is hiding away. Um pro-virus is whenever it's hiding away in your DNA. Inserting itself in your DNA. So what is transformation? Um. How does this relate to onchoviruses and what are they? We learned about this term transformation in terms of. Uh bacteria, which is why I don't really like to go into it too much with the viruses, but when viruses transform something, and they can transform. Now, when you have a bacteria picking up exogenous DNA, that's transformation for bacteria. When you are a virus, you can transform cells. By um going through this process of incorporating your genes into the host gene. So let's say you have cells in your body infected by a virus and those cells um experience. Um basically the prophase or pro-virus, I should say. Pro-virus where the virus is incorporating itself into your genome. Um that can lead to uh those genes getting inserted in a way that your cells now go unchecked in your cell cycle. Or they uh grow um just too fast, too many copies, all sorts of problems that can lead to cancer. Which we mentioned in, in the uh whiteboard part of this. But if that happens, if you start having um cancer develop from. The viral uh genome getting inserted into your genome, things going unchecked like that. That is called transformation of those cells. Transformation means that we've turned your regular cells into now cancer cells. So that's what that means. For onchoviruses, and an onchovirus is just a virus that can cause cancer. A bacteriophage is any virus that infects bacteria. Um lysogeny is whenever the bacteriophage inserts its genome into the bacteria. The lytic phase is whenever the bacteriophage goes through just normal virus stuff. You know, ma, you know, duplicating itself and then exploding out and moving on and doing it over and over again. So a temperate phase is something that can switch between lysogeny and the lytic phase. Lytic phase and the prophase is just something that's a pro-virus, but in phase form. So pro-virus and prophase, that's just for suspect to that. Uh they're both um viral DNA getting inserted into the host genome. In the case of the pro-virus, we're talking about eukaryotes and their genome getting affected. Um prophase, we're talking about bacteriophage genome being inserted into a bacterial genome. So. Um lysogeny, what effect can it have on humans? This is referring to the fact that um if you have. Bacteriophage genome inserted into bacterial genome. Um that can make the bacteria get new genes like um toxins or drug resistance, whatever. And then um that's called lysogenic conversion, when we have that happen, and that can affect, of course, um disease within humans. And what is a prion and what kind of diseases it cause? A prion is an infectious proteinaceous particle, so misfolded proteins that can cause other proteins to misfold. Um and what kind of diseases does it cause? Causes spongy form encephalopathy. Alright, so let's, we have five of these open-ended questions. And then we'll go through um at least one of the case studies. So provide evidence in support of or refuting the following statement: Viruses are simple cellular agents of disease. Um this is completely untrue, and the reason why that it is untrue is because um. This is viruses are simple cellular agents of disease. Well, they aren't, they don't have cells, right? So that's already a problem that we're having. So are they simple? That's, I mean, you can argue that they're probably not simple, but you could argue that they are too, so I guess that that's just subjective, but. Are they um always agents of disease? They are not always associated with actual disease. Um disease being deviation from health. There are plenty of viruses out there that don't cause disease, it's just that we don't care. So. Um but yeah, so this is false. Some are pathogenic and disease-causing, but they do not have. Cells. There are acellular. Um. Question two, summarize the unique properties of viruses and explain which of these characteristics allow them to function as parasites. Um I, you know, as far as the unique properties of viruses, the fact that they are going to use. Your surface molecules to get into your cells um and mimic usually the normal molecules that normally go to get, get in that way. So they'll mimic that so they can um hijack that system just to get taken up by your cell. They hijack the whole concept that your cell will take things up inside of it. So it's pretty unique. Um they can have a variety of genomes. Um they only carry the genes that they absolutely need. So that um they can actually uh benefit from mutations because they can account for the fact like if you get a random mutation. That isn't beneficial and it causes that virus not be able to replicate. Big wolf theme, we've got millions and millions of others waiting on the sideline. Will give us five minutes and we'll have one with a mutation that does benefit somehow. You know, makes us better at doing our viral job and stuff like that. Um so that, that quick pace of replication works out quite well for them. They can coat themselves in host proteins. Because they're using your own machinery. They don't have to worry about bringing their own machinery at all. They just use yours. Um. They bud out of your own membrane again, so that can help with coating themselves with your markers if they want to. Or um, you know, it just saves them the time from having to make their own membranes and to protect themselves. And uh you know, they can be very specific in what cells that they can attack, or they can be very general, all sorts of stuff like that. And what else? I mean, I could go on and on. So at minimum, virus particles are protein shell covering beneath like acid core. Remember that protein shell is called a capsid. They are intracellular parasites. They rely on host cells to carry out their life cycle. And um most viruses lack enzymes to carry out any of their own metabolic processes, so they have to steal everything from the host. As well as their own um protein synthesizing machinery and all of that ones from the host, so pretty neat stuff. Um question three, describe the nucleic acid configuration of a positive sense RNA virus. And explain why its multiplication cycle is less complex than that of a retrovirus. Okay, so I'm gonna bring the thing up to go through this one just because it makes it easier to follow along with it, but. Um a positive sense RNA virus, it is ready for translation right away. And remember, translation is whenever we go from RNA into protein, cause remember, DNA. Um to RNA. Sorry, I don't have my pen, so I'm writing with the mouse. To protein. And this is something we will review in the next chapter. So um DNA to RNA, this is. Transcribing. I'm just gonna put this, tran. Description. Um RNA to protein is translation. And one way that I always remind people of this, I'm sure I'll say this a million times, a million times. Which is simply that, boy, I remember one, one way to remember. DNA, RNA, they are both nucleic acids. They both got N A, nucleic acid, ribonucleic acid. Deoxy ribonucleic acid. So this is just writing. The very complicated, very, very detailed, multi, you know, um gene. Genome, DNA situation, just writing what you want from that. From that same language of nucleic acid into your penned version, your scribe version. In RNA, so taking out this um blueprint to build sunglasses. Out of the DNA genome that has the blueprints to build anything possible ever in your imagination. And so taking that and writing it down as a scribe in the same language. You know, blueprint, write down just the part of the blueprint that you need. Scribe, you're just writing the same language. But however, if you're going to take that language of that blueprint and turn it into your product. The language of the blueprint into the actual product of this, the actual sunglasses or whatever. That is a whole other language, so you're gonna have to translate that. So yes, you'll write down the same language, DNA to RNA in your own script as a scribe, your transcription. Um then RNA, that's scribe, written stuff that you wrote down, translating it into a whole other product. This is the sunglasses. So that's how I remember that. So anytime you're taking RNA and turning it into protein, that's a whole other language you're translating it. So that's how that's gonna work. Um oh yeah. So positive sense RNA, that's positive sense means it's plus, you're good to go. You can't actually translate this. You don't need it to be put in a different format. It's just like mRNA. It's positive sense, it's good to go, ready to translate. Um retroviruses. They have um, so yeah, so it can just be read. Um retroviruses, they have RNA genome that has to be copied into DNA first. Um that's so they can put the DNA into your genome, put in your, into your genes. Or also, they'll take that DNA that they made that copy, so go from their RNA, turn it into DNA. And then make positive sense RNA from that to make their proteins. Because what they come with isn't positive sense RNA, it's negative sense RNA. So there has to be some sort of transition to the positive sense somehow. They go about it a roundabout way. They don't just go positive sense and then make the copy to make the negative, you know, they don't go this way. Negative sense, positive sense, she, now you can use this for making protein. They don't do it that way. They say negative sense. Uh let's make this into DNA, and then we can use that DNA to go the usual way, the usual route of DNA to RNA to protein. Which is nuts to think about, but they also take that DNA that they make and put it into your genome, cause they're tricky like that, but. Yeah, positive sense RNA, ready to go. We can just start translating it right off the bat. We don't have to wait to make copies. We don't have to make. An opposite, you know, match to it or anything. Alright, compare and contrast the process of latency and lysogeny, providing examples of latent viruses and lysogenic viruses. Um. I, I mean, I'm not really sure, I'm supposed to provide like this, I don't know if they want me to give like exact, exact examples, but. Um alright, so latency is definitely one of those things, when I, I'm talking to you guys about latency. It is almost the same as lysogeny. You can have latency occur whenever you have a genome being inserted into your host DNA. This is talking about herpes viruses, which is absolutely the best example you can give. The herpes, it incorporates itself into your DNA. When it does that, it is now latent. It is waiting for, you know, you to get stressed out or have a weakened immune system or something in order to have an outbreak again. Um so that's latency. This is the exact same thing that's happening with bacterial phages in lysogeny. Where the DNA of the phase is just getting put into the DNA of the bacteria. Um so they're very similar in that sense. Um let's see where this is going on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um even when your cells divide, let's say in your peripheral nerves. Because those can divide and, and make new copies of themselves, not like your central nervous system. Uh but when they do, they copy the herpes virus that's incorporated in your genome with it. And that's the case with the bacteria that are infected with um the lysob, lysogenic. Um, you know, viruses, the phages as well, so they'll carry that with them whenever they divide. So that's one way that the bacteriophages can divide. I don't know what else to say, but I think that's just fine. I mean, I feel like knowing about the herpes virus is pretty good, so, cool. Um identify three major differences between a viral disease and a prion. Is it three major differences? That's sort of weirdly specific. Um, I should have read those last two questions. When I knew they were about prions, I thought, okay, good, prion question. I should have read, that is a weird question. So three major differences. Let's go through what their examples were that they are giving us. Um a prion disease, primary, oh, that's right, I did read this. I thought that this was, yeah, okay, sure. Prions is, it's just a weird way of approaching this. Um it's, it, we know that a prion disease is gonna cause spongy form encephalopathy. That's all you're gonna get from a prion disease. Now it's gonna have neurological symptoms, and there could be an array of those, but that's what prions cause. Spongy form encephalopathies. Viruses can cause a crazy lot of different diseases. We know of like HIV, like herpes, like COVID, like flu, like Ebola, like, there's so many different ones. Those are all viral infections. Um so yeah, there's a wide variety of, of things going on there. Diseases caused by prions are chronic and persistent, and that's that. I mean, there's no getting around that. They have a very long period of latency, so very long, you could even say incubation period. Decades even, you have thirty years of having a prion and not having any symptoms. Um viral diseases can become very, can come on with symptoms very quickly. Within a matter of a day or two, you could be showing symptoms. Um and that can uh be very, very severe. Some of them have no lingering effects at all. You get a cold. And that's a viral infection. You get a cold virus and um usually you don't have any lingering effects once you kick it. So, but that's not the case with the prion. I mean, you're gonna die. They're always fatal. Um and viral uh diseases, yes, have a range of manifestations and outcomes. Be very, very mild, or you could die. But it's not like prions where you know what you're getting, spongy form encephalopathy. And takes a long time to come around, and you're gonna die. I think that's that. So that's what I was gonna, it wasn't as weird as I thought it was gonna be. Um let's just go through this one case study, cause this one has kind of a lot going on with it. Um and then I'm gonna call it. A day of this. I will post the other ones though, so you guys can take time to go through them if you like to. Because I like how they sometimes bring a lot of aspects of what we're learning together. So twenty-six-year-old white female presents in her physician's office with genital itching and sharp severe. Twenty-six-year-old white female presents in her physician's office with genital itching and sharp severe pain in the labia. She complains of three previous episodes of pain over the past six months, each of which followed. Um, by the appearance of red sores, accrested and healed without a scar. I think this, we already know where this one's going, don't we? Um, on examination, the physician observes a cluster of small red blisters localized in the area of the worst pain. No significant discharge was observed from the vagina. The patient's urine was clear and yellow, urinalysis had normal specific gravity, no sugar, no protein, no white blood cells, no. And nothing abnormal, no bacteria even, the patient's temperature is thirty-six point five degrees Celsius, so. This is normal body temperature, there's no effects in the urine, um, but in the um. Uh, in on the the labia's external vaginal area, I am having a phone call right now, of course, I. Just give me one second. Hello? Yes, hi, I'm so glad to hear from you. That is correct, yes, I do. Alright, give me. Alright, awesome, we'll see you in just a moment. Alright, bye. Sorry, this lady drove all the way from Hinton to come pick up these plossums, I mean, I definitely appreciate it, don't get me wrong, but. I will be right back, if I, uh, I'm gonna try to get my husband to deal with this, I should be back, but more than five minutes, so I'll be right back, um. Start, I said read through this and I will come back and we'll, we'll discuss um the questions. Look at these plossums. Alright, I'm back, sorry, the uh. Plossums have found themselves a new home in Hinton, so she drove all the way out here from Hinton. Anyways, um, geez. Uh, yeah, getting back into gear, so. Um, normal temperature, right, so the patient's history reveals she's unmarried, but she's sexually active, she is using oral contraceptive. Uh, she's taken that for about four years, so nothing new or changed there. A woman states she has five sexual partners over the past year and reported that her episodes have become progressively more severe. So what is the com- number one, what's the cause of her complaint? And ask her physician, physician, would you recommend that she modify her sexual activity? Um, is there an effective treatment for this condition and what serious long-term risk does this woman have? I feel like obviously here, and maybe um, obvious to me, of course, because I, you know, teach the course and all this, but. This is herpes that we're talking about, she most likely has genital herpes, there'd be plenty of testing that we could do. Um, to offer, um, typically going to be taking uh swabs and samples of the sores, maybe doing PCR. Just to double check that, but um, she is likely to transmit the transfection, the, the infection when there are lesions present. Because there is virus actually active out on the um skin at that time. And um she can transmit it in the absence of symptoms as well, um, because there can still be um virus present in the area. So um, she is strict about use of condoms, um. The sus- sus- susceptible partners, individuals who do not yet have herpes, or at least the strain that she may be carrying. Um, can minimize but not eliminate their risk of transmission. Medications can reduce frequency and severity of recurrences. Um, and uh decrease the likelihood also of transmission to to her partners, so. She would want to be advised to um keep up with um, you know, barrier protection. To prevent transmission to her partners as well as. Uh, taking a medication to decrease the frequency of outbreaks for her own comfort as well as for transmission, but. She is um increased, has an increased risk of cervical cancer and should have pap tests to monitor. Now, this, we're talking about herpes and it does not cause. Um, risk, it does not cause cervical cancer, but why would this be talking about being an increased risk for cervical cancer? If this doesn't actually cause cervical cancer, I'm gonna be clear, herpes simplex does not cause cervical cancer. However, because. Of the outbreaks associated with all the lesions coming out and developing, the immune system response involved. In um, whenever you have presentation of herpes outbreak. And the likelihood that she has been exposed to HPV, which is the cause of cervical cancer, which. Most, if not all sexually active individuals have been exposed to. Um, she is at risk because of those things and because she has latency associated with the uh, the HSV, the herpes. Then she is at risk for um affecting uh potential HPV infection that could be coming along with that. So that's what this is uh referring to, it's not that the, the herpes is causing the cancer, it's that the coming in tandem with it. Um, could put you at more risk for having cervical cancer and someone who doesn't also have herpes on top of HPV. So, yeah, so that's what that is referring to. Um, but yeah, so I have uh some other case studies on here. Um. I am gonna post them. She's sorry. I will post this whole PowerPoint up on, um, along with the whiteboard link and the recording of everything else. But there are some other case studies here, so there are four more case studies. Um, since we're, we started a little bit late, but still, it was only like ten oh five or something when we started, now it's eleven twenty-six, I don't wanna go too much longer on this, but. Um, but yeah, I recommend, you know, you can look through these and test your knowledge and understanding of the diseases that we're learning about. In our class as well as your knowledge and understanding of viruses in general, applying that to these situations, so. That's pretty good. So, any uh specific questions for me before I leave this?
No, I appreciate you, Lauren.
Yeah, my pleasure, um, it's been a weird day, it's been weird, so.
Got picked up, though.
I know, I'll have to show pictures, I'll, I'll put it like in the next presentation so you guys can see, because they are like really cute little babies, but. Yeah, they're safe.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Yeah, alright, well, you have a good weekend, then.
You too, bye-bye.
Alright, bye.